Also meeting to order, everybody stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, take the roll.
Mayor O'Connor.
Here.
Marsette.
Here.
Alms. DeZio.
Here.
Brock.
Here.
Paul.
Here.
All right, the first thing up is comments, citizen comments. This is citizens' opportunity to come up and speak about things that they would like to address, have addressed by the city, any issues they may have. Keep in mind that if the issue is on the agenda, we do not allow comments for things that are on the agenda. If people want to comment on those, council member could request that that item be pulled from the agenda. We could have a public hearing on it. And if you could keep your comments brief and try not to be repetitive. So having said that, does anybody like to make a comment?
My name is Addison Filiatro, and I live in the city of Hudson. And I'm here today to thank Paul DeZio for his four years of service to the city of Hudson. I wouldn't bring my kids to just anybody. So I obviously hold you in high regard. When I met Paul, I had lost most of my faith in government. But he taught me that good elected officials not only listen, but reach out. I had a question, and even though I wasn't in his district, he offered to meet with me to learn more about the issue. He made himself available to all constituents, and it mattered. When I was a poll worker this last election cycle, a senior citizen had called Paul because she didn't know where to go, but he led her to the right spot. This hasn't been an easy time to serve at any level of government, but Paul led with compassion and open heart and a willingness to listen. That willingness will live on in the newly established diversity committee and the multiple other positives he voted for, like hybrid police cars, a community liaison officer, more accessible transportation that will come in 2023. Thank you so much for helping so many people in your community and helping make Hudson better. I hope this new chapter is peaceful and look forward to what you will do.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Hello, I'm Sammy Ditloff. I live on 2047 Highland Circle.
I'm Kelly Fuchs, and I live 1724 Aurora Avenue.
And we're just here to also show appreciation to Paul for his years of service on city council. I moved here about a year ago, and so been trying to get to know people as quickly as I can, and Paul made himself available to me very quickly, and I got familiar with his work and what's going on in the city. And I just wanted to say I really appreciate your dedication to the city. I can tell you care a lot, and even though you weren't technically part of my district for that long, since I just got redistricted, I really appreciate the time that we shared a district briefly, and I look forward to what you do next.
Thank you, Sammy.
Yeah.
And I'd like to adhere to what Sammy said. I don't know you well, but I did get to know you a little bit throughout the campaign, and you were very responsive, and I really appreciate you and thank you for everything you've done.
Thanks, Kelly.
Thank you. Any other comments? Any other comments? Any other comments? Having none, we'll close that portion of the agenda. Next up, we have an Arbor Day proclamation.
All right, good evening, everyone. Mike Maraz, Director of Public Works. Before I give the Arbor Day proclamation, I want to touch base on two things, make it brief. First one being the Hudson Urban and Forestry Board Annual Tree Sale. We partnered with the Hudson Daybreak Rotary this year, and we are able to offer bare root trees at a very, very low cost. If you are interested in getting a bare root tree from Willow River Tree Farm, you have until Friday to go on to our website, and there you'll find the information, order form, so on and so forth. But cash or check are due by this Friday. So that's number one, check that out. And thank you for the Hudson Daybreak Rotary partnering this year. It's been great to get to know some of their members and kind of jump on board what they're trying to accomplish. So having said that, we also have an upcoming Arbor Day program, which I'll talk about here briefly. It is Saturday, April 30th, and it's actually going to be at City Hall. We're going to replace a couple of the trees that were damaged during the storm out front here. And then after that, we're going to do a tree trek of the Vine Street tour. And then after that, we're going to go down to the welcome sign and partner with the Daybreak Rotary, plant some trees behind the welcome sign that was just refurbished by the Hudson Chamber. So that's on April 30th, beginning at nine o'clock. So if you're able to attend, that'd be awesome. And we're going to do a blurb in the paper about that coming up here in the next week or two. And finally, proclamation for Arbor Days. Whereas 2022 marks the 150th anniversary of Arbor Day in the United States, and whereas trees are among Hudson's most beautiful natural resources and bestow fine opportunities for aesthetic appreciation and recreation, as well as improvements for our homes, public lands, and are indispensable to our ecology as providers of wildlife habitat, erosion control, air filters, noise inhibitors. And whereas Hudson has been named a Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation for 12 years in recognition of the outstanding efforts by the city and its residents provide the legal basis, financial investment, community participation to support an ongoing program to plant, nurture, and routinely maintain and restore their canopy of trees. And whereas the demands of our environment and our environmental resources necessitate an increased awareness of ecological values, as well as an individual commitment to study and appreciation of trees and their maintenance. Now therefore, I, Mike Maraz, on behalf of Mayor Rich O'Connor, do hereby proclaim Friday, April 29th, and Saturday, April 30th of 2022 as Arbor Days in the city of Hudson, and call upon all its citizens to participate in an Arbor Day celebration and continue to support and protect our trees and woodlands. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Do you have some of those things to pass around, the different trees?
That would've been a great plan. You know, after my presentation here, may I go make some copies and put them out on the outside here? So, yep.
Excellent, thanks, Mike. All right, consent agenda, consent calendar.
No, you missed one.
No, he's got a presentation.
Did I miss something?
I keep talking.
Oh, I'm sorry, the MS4 annual report.
Hopefully this works. There it is. We got it. All right, MS4 annual report. So I recently submitted the annual report to the Wisconsin DNR to fulfill our permit requirements. And I'm just going to cover what the MS4 report is, what we found this year, so on and so forth, to give you an idea of what we accomplished and what we have to look forward to in 2022. So obviously, the MS4, a very, very common acronym now, stands for the Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System. DNR was established as a Hudson MS4 community in 2014. The threshold is 10,000 people, so we hit that back way back then. And approximately 245 municipalities in Wisconsin are an MS4 community. The stormwater utility in preparation of this designation was created in 2012, and then the stormwater management plan and ordinances were approved in 2017 to support the MS4 program. So just a couple of quick facts about our storm sewer system. We have over 400,000 linear feet of storm sewer pipes in the ground. Two approximately 3,000 catch basins are inlets, 170 outlets, 1,040 manholes, and we have 118 stormwater facilities. Those are our ponds that you see throughout the community, whether they're infiltration, wet ponds, so on and so forth. Thirty-four of which are private, 84 are public. We actually went through all of our old developers' agreements over the winter and marked them up, and we were able to find a lot of information. So it was a good winter to see who owned what, so on and so forth, and whose maintenance responsibilities these facilities are. So as part of our MS4 permit through the DNR, every year we have to pull a permit in order to discharge into bodies of water. Part of that permit, we are required to meet the following categories. That includes public education and outreach, public involvement and participation, illicit discharge, detection, elimination, construction site pollutant control, post-construction stormwater management, pollution prevention, and stormwater quality management. These are all requirements that I have to submit a report on at the end of every year. So public education, outreach, public involvement are your, you know, river fest events, earth day events. We have website, website, social media posts, passive media that I handed out before the meeting that you have in front of you. We're also involved with the Rained Rivers Consortium, which is a group of 12 municipalities in the region. We get together every month. We come up with, you know, bounce ideas off each other, what's happening in your community, what's working, what's not. We help put on trainings. We're actually doing a stormwater pond maintenance training here early May. I'm speaking at that one over in Menominee. I'll send out the invite to all of you. If you can make it, great. It's a great opportunity to learn about storm pond maintenance. DNR is going to be there, so on and so forth. So again, this, all these things help meet that requirement for public education and outreach. Second thing, illicit discharge. We have 70, 170 total outfalls. Sorry, about 34 identified as high priority as they discharge directly into public waters. So that's the St. Croix River or Lake Maaloo. So those 34 outfalls, we inspect them, you know, periodically throughout the summer season just to make sure that they're not discharging anything. And this is one thing that I want to tell not only the council, but the public as a whole. If you're out walking about in the community, and you ever do see a colored substance coming out of an outfall, please contact the Public Works office. The DNR really takes this stuff seriously, and they want to know what's happening. We're able to trace it back, so on and so forth. So that's one of the reasons why illicit discharge is so important, just to make sure that there's no pollutants that are going out into our public waters. Post-construction stormwater management, so this is our pond maintenance program. It's really ramped up here in the last couple of years. Like I said, we have 118 facilities in our community. I would probably say half of those haven't been touched since they've been put in. So you're probably talking 20, 30 years, life cycle of ponds that haven't been maintained, which means there's a lot of trees, a lot of vegetation that has grown up. You know, built-in capacity, the ponds aren't operating as they originally designed, so we're having to go in and maintain these facilities. Obviously, we're doing a big one at the Stone Pine Development right now, where we have outfalls and inlets that are completely buried under, you know, two, three feet of sediment over time. So having to clear out the vegetation so we can have access for equipment to dredge that material out, I have to apply for a permit with the DNR in order to dispose of that material and bring it back down to its originally planned design so that it continues to work. Construction site pollution control, this is the city's opportunity to monitor those areas that are over one acre in development. So last year, we had four that qualified in 2021. And what this entails is the development has to take out an erosion control and site grading permit. We then, as city staff, go out to the site to make sure that they're following their plan. So that's inlet protections, erosion control logs, silt fence, so on and so forth. If they fail to comply with that erosion control plan, we do have the authority to shut down that project. Most of the time, the contractors are very, very receptive and willing to work with us, and we haven't had to shut anybody down or write up any citations since I've been here. Pollution prevention, this is your street sweeping, catch base cleaning, our fall leaf collection program through waste management. These are all things that help, you know, keep the debris and pollutants out of our storm drains and out of our public waters. So, you know, we started sweeping this week, we'll continue to sweep until November. So it's a very, very effective way to clean our streets. Then lastly, stormwater quality management. So the goal of this is to reduce the discharge of pollutants into the stormwaters or into our public waters. So this is done via our stormwater facilities, whether it's ponds, infiltration basins, street sweeping, rain gardens, cleaning out the sumps in our storm system. The state requires 20% TSS, total suspended solid reduction. And right now, Hudson is achieving 59.72% TSS reduction, which is very, very good news. The one thing that we'll have to pay attention to over the next few years, five years, is the Lake St. Croix nutrient TMDL. TMDL is total maximum daily load. So the DNR measures how much pollutant load are we putting into our public waters. So right now, the state requires a 54.01 reduction. We are achieving a 58.74%, so we're kind of close there. If we were ever to come close to that 54%, we would have to increase street sweeping. We might need to, you know, look for exemptions for our leaf collection program, maybe do a different type of leaf collection program, so on and so forth. So things to think about over the next couple of years as that number is hovering kind of right around that minimum requirement. And then finally, how do we pay for all this? Obviously, you know, between myself, we have one dedicated staff person for our stormwater program. He is helped by another individual from the Public Works Department. So the city created the stormwater utility back in 2012. And what this is, it's a, it's an RU that's put on your utility bill every quarter. So, you know, one to two family dwelling homes are charged $12 every quarter to help pay for this program. Larger, more commercial units with more impervious surface, more discharge of water, rainwater into our system, they get charged more. In 2021, our revenue was $531,880.05. So it kind of gives you an idea of how robust this program is and how it will continue to grow as we continue to expand. So, and then finally, looking ahead for 2022, continue our maintenance inspection of ponds. We have new GIS collection systems in place now, Survey 123. We go onto the field, all of our inspections are right on an iPad. The field staff can go out, they can take pictures, they download it. And basically, when I pull all my reports at the end of the year, it's all in one spot. So I can just click on our GIS portal. Nick O'Brien has been doing a great job with that. I get all the download, all the reports, print them off, send them off to the DNR. It's been working slick. Obviously, continue to work on our existing infrastructure and then incorporate stormwater upgrades when we do continue to do street reconstructions. So, and that's all I have. I know it wasn't three minutes, but a lot to cover. So I appreciate it for the time.
Any questions, anybody?
Mike, if I could, thank you so much. This was incredibly helpful information, and I appreciate all the efforts that you're doing to protect our waterways. I'm wondering, is this something that could be shared on our website with the addition of maybe spelling out what some of those acronyms are? So I appreciate all your efforts on this and know it really is impactful to our community, so thank you.
Yeah, yeah, no problem. I can certainly add that. In fact, if you go on our website, under our stormwater page, we have an interactive map where we're continuing to take pictures of our facilities throughout the community, upload them onto a virtual map, interactive map, where you can kind of see when the pond was created, how much load it takes, what's the volume, so on and so forth. So it's a pretty neat site to explore. So, but I can certainly add a lot of this information there as well. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. So I, I've been informed that there's no live stream going on right now. Is that corrected?
Shift it back on.
Okay. All right, thanks. Consent calendar.
Approve the meeting minutes from the March 21st, 2022 regular council meeting. Approve claims in the amount of $1,111,219.65. Approve invoice to use ARPA funds for the fire department. Approval to direct staff to prepare resolution and begin the vacation process for a partial discontinuance request for 11th Streets generally located between 1217 11th Street and 1208 11th Street made by Stephen and Terry Wilcox. Award a bid for 2022 street maintenance project to LA Blacktop Company. Accept the 2020 millon overlay project and authorize final payment. And approve the retail Class B beer and Class B liquor license for Smokey Treats LLC.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion second to approve, roll call.
Marsette.
Yes.
Alms. DeZio.
Yes.
Brock.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Motion is approved, consent agenda is approved. Discussion and possible action on Resolution 6-22 to approve a development agreement between the city of Hudson and Riverfront Properties, Inc. Mike.
Good evening, council. It's been a while since I've been out here.
Yeah.
I think everybody should be fairly familiar with this proposal at 106 Buckeye. It's a four-story, 21,000 and change square foot building. It has, it contains three to four residential condo units located on the second through the fourth floor, which is a slight change from what was approved by the Plan Commission in 2021. Previously, it had two stories or two floors of commercial office space. Now it's just the one main level is commercial. There's tents, parking stalls, there's an automated parking system located within the building, similar to what was done at the Dibbo's redevelopment project. In your packet, you'll see some additional architectural narrative and how it fits in with the NR 118 requirements, as well as our downtown overlay district. You will also find the neighborhood meeting and commercial, or in the comments received in the packet. This is a little bit unique in some ways. What would happen if this project is approved is this building would, or the existing building, the brown structure that's there would be demolished, and then the site would be raised up with a retaining wall to get it out of the floodplain. And they would need, it's called a letter of map revision from FEMA. And then once that is obtained, that would, then we would be able to issue the building permit for construction of this building. They anticipate starting in June of 2022 if approved, with a September of 2023 completion date. One of the main points of discussion at Plan Commission in 2021 was how was this, the construction going to be staged? So you'll also find in your packet a very detailed, comprehensive explanation of how they plan on making sure that they aren't spilling over with the construction into the neighboring properties or parking lots, most notably River City Center. So with that, I can answer some questions, the applicants here too. Obviously, the next item dovetails with this one as well, is with it. So if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Anybody?
I move to suspend the rules.
Second.
Motion second to suspend the rules, roll call.
Marsette.
Yes.
DeZio.
Yes.
Brock.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Excuse me, council, I don't think you need to do it for just the development plans.
We had resolution on A, 6A.
We had switched that around. We can do the development agreement.
I can withdraw and wait.
Okay, if you would, please.
I'll withdraw that motion.
Okay.
So we're going to 1, 6B now?
Yep.
Okay. You're taking all the fun away, huh?
Sorry.
So you're looking for a motion on that?
I'm looking for the motion on the development plans.
Move to approve.
Motion second to approve, discussion.
It's going to clean that corner up very nicely. I hope this looks good. Long time coming.
I was impressed by the letters of support from all the neighboring groups and whatnot. So that holds well, I think.
Yeah. Anybody else? All right, we got a motion second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion's approved.
Now, do you want the resolution?
With the development agreement, yes.
I move to suspend the rules, 6A.
Motion second to suspend the rules, roll call.
Marsette.
Yes.
DeZio.
Yes.
Brock.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Motion's approved, rules are suspended.
Move to adopt resolution 6-22.
We're just working together, buddy.
Second.
All right, we have a motion second, discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion's approved.
Thank you.
Anything else you want to do up there, Mike?
I can stand here.
I think you're good.
Thank you.
All right. Comments, any communications?
I want to take a point of personal privilege. This might sound a little bit like the Academy Award, so just bear with me. I won't slap you. So first of all, I want to congratulate Alderperson-elect Joy Knudsen on her victory in District 3. Joy has my respect and support as she transitions into her new position. I wish her success in representing the people of District 3, and I'm here to support her with whatever, basically, you would need in the future as you transition. I have to be honest with you guys, I'm kind of excited to have three women on the Hudson City Council. There was no applause, okay. I also want to give a shout out to Mike Kennedy, because I see him in the crowd tonight, so congratulations, Mike. I've worked with Mike on the park board, and I think he is going to be an excellent representative for District 4. Just love your demeanor, love your questioning, love your dedication to the city. So I'm really excited to see you take off in District 4. I also want to thank my family. So my wife Tiffany, my kids Addie, Ed, Asylus, and Henry for sacrificing a lot of time with their dad so that I can serve on the city council the past four years. I know that's been challenging for them, and I hope that I've been able to model and instill the values of public service in each of them. I hope that sticks with them. Second, I'd like to also thank the people of District 3 for their confidence in electing me twice to represent them. It's been an honor and pleasure to serve you the past four years, and they've been some very difficult years. I have done my best to treat all of you with respect and to represent you with integrity. Third, I want to thank former council member, the late John Hoggett, for taking me under his wing when I first ran. I would not be here today without him, and he taught me so much about city government. Also, I'd like to give a shout out to former county supervisor, Roy Solberg, for all his help in my first campaign. And of course, all those who've supported my campaign and offered words of encouragement, encouragement, excuse me, along the way. I also want to thank city staff. Just a huge shout out to all of you. I think Hudson is in extremely good hands. I just don't think the general public knows how good you guys are. That's probably our fault, because we don't sell you enough. But I have a great admiration and respect for the city staff. I want to thank Erin Reeves, who's usually to my left here. I want to thank Public Works and Park Director Mike Maraz and Assistant Deb Andrews. I've worked with you guys extensively, and it's been just a pleasure. City planners, Mike Johnson, Tiffany Weiss. City clerks, Becky Egan and Karen Duchau, again, for, thanks for all you guys do. Fire Finance Department, excuse me, Allison Egger. Thank you for all you do for our city in keeping those numbers on. City engineer, Dean Chamberlain, huge shout out. It's been a pleasure. You have added so much to the city the last, has it been like a year and a quarter or something, three quarters? Two and a half? Man, time flies when you're having fun, Dean. What can I say? You've been a huge asset to the city. Water Department, Kip Peters, I haven't been able to work with him a lot, but I have a lot of respect for him. City Attorney Nick Vivian, notice how nobody's coming to get thanked this evening, I'm just saying. Nick Vivian's been awesome to work with. City inspectors, David Gray and Rhett Borner, I think are doing tremendous job. Our public safety folks, so Police Chief Willams, thank you, Fire Chief St. Martin. And I'm going to say John Mueller, I'm going to give him a shout out from Lakeview. Worked with him on the contract work way back in the day. And then our library director, I want to thank Shelley Toga. So I know I'm forgetting some people, so please don't take it personally if I forgot you, but I just want to say thank you to all of you. And then I want to give a shout out to my fellow council members and obviously to the mayor. Thanks to each of you for your passion, for your dedication to Hudson. You have served Hudson with grace and strength through a difficult time in our city's history. I want to ask God to bless you. Want to ask God to bless you with your future work to protect and continue to build a strong community. Thank you for your service.
Thank you, Paul. Anybody?
Thank you, Paul.
You're welcome.
You've done a lot for the city, particularly with the diversity committee and then a lot with the Public Works.
Deeply grateful for your service and look forward to what's next for you. And no, I won't be across here, but I know we'll work together on future things together. Thanks for everything.
Your passion has served the city well. Thank you.
You know, I'd like to add, Paul, it's been a real pleasure working with you. You came in at a time that was pretty difficult with EMS. I would say, I would say this, that the work that I watched you do, the work that you and I did together, I think really reflect what government is about and what we're supposed to do. We came from two different, completely opposite positions on EMS, and you worked with us on that. And it was compromised on your part to be able to do the RFP. Without your vote, EMS wouldn't look like it does right now, and certainly would have taken longer for it to look the way it does right now. And I enjoyed working with you on the contract. I enjoyed working with you throughout that process. And again, I think it's a reflection of how government is actually supposed to work, right? You've got people with differing points of view, but you're able to sit down at a table and work them out. Clearly, you've heard words to describe you, your passion and conviction. You're one of the more thoughtful, if not the most thoughtful, member of the council. And I commend you for that.
And I commend you for that. You, you know, you come in with conviction and you're very conscientious in your approach to what you do. We don't always agree, but certainly this was the forum to work out those disagreements. And I applaud you for the way you did that, the way you handled yourself and the way you represented the people, not only of your district, but the people of our city. So congratulations, son, for very good years and thank you very much for the service. Appreciate it, Dan, I know that's not over yet.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate it.
Anybody else?
And I feel like in honor to Paul, I think I have to ask for some things to go on the future agenda, if I may. I'm hoping that perhaps at our May second meeting, we could review or get an update on the code of ethics status. And then I would encourage us to consider holding a public hearing to get citizen feedback about public comments. And I would ask that that be a discussion and a possible action item.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I have one future thing, but I won't be here for it. But a last request. Could you guys take a picture of the new council when Joy and Mike come on? And could that be featured on the city website as a way of bringing people together? We're always listed as individuals. And I think it would be really powerful if you see the entire city council in one picture. It's just a cool symbolic thing. I think it'd be good for future records to say, hey, this was the council from such and such a year. So I just encourage you to do that.
Okay. Who's our official photographer? Everybody who got that? Brayden, was that you?
He found that funny.
Perhaps before we leave tonight, we could do it with those of us that are here tonight. So Paul has that for you.
I don't want to ruin the picture. You want a beautiful picture. I would move to adjourn at this point.
Second.
Motion second to adjourn, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, we stand adjourned. Thank you, everybody.